As Chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order two zero two zero dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe, observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, six four six eight seven six nine nine two three and webinar ID nine two eight eight four three seven five three one seven or by clicking on the website address, which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call six oh three nine two six eight nine nine two extension one one four or email at D T U I T E at sau21.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taking during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance when each member states their presence. Please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law.
Jim Kime?
Present and alone.
Rebecca Burdick?
Present, not alone.
And Sharon Gordon?
Present alone.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Alright. So next on the agenda is a public hearing on the trust funds. Yeah, I have an email to open. Okay. So do you want me to read this legal notice? That's the right thing, Matt? I think you're muted.
So you don't need to read their actual legal notice, just just note that it was legally posted.
Sure. Alright, so the there was a a notice that was properly posted. The legal notice was in the Newport Daily News on February 22nd and the Hampton Union on February 19th. And the purpose of this was for expenses relating to unanticipated special education tuition costs and for the purchase of student computers for remote learning. There'll be a withdrawal from the Special Education Trust Fund and the Computer Capital Reserve Fund and the purpose of that of these expenditures. And the amount of these expenditures are twenty five thousand for the Southampton Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. That currently has a hundred and sixty five thousand, two hundred and fifty five dollars in it. And for the computers, the withdrawal would be four thousand dollars from the from the Computer Capital Reserve Fund and that currently has twenty three thousand, six hundred and ninety two dollars. And as those are both as of October 30th, 2020. The amounts. If there's any questions or comments, please make them at this time. Alright, let's see anything. So I will close the public hearing at this point. And we'll do the vote on those when we get to the school board meeting portion. Alright, we good? Alright, awesome. Alright, next, questions and comments from those in attendance.
You guys want Aileen to be part of the meeting?
Yeah, you can bring her in.
I don't think she wants to be a part of the meeting today.
Okay, I'll take her out.
I'm really sorry. I can't be present. I'm just listening. I'm with my dad who's in the hospital, so.
Okay, understood thing. Alright, doesn't sound like we have any public comments. So next is consideration in the minutes from February 3rd, 2021. Becky and Sharon, do you have any?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 3rd, 2021, as written.
Second.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent report. Caroline, do you want to talk us through it?
Thank you, sure. I'll just touch on the pieces that apply to Southampton. My report is attached in board docs. So return to earn in-person learning, of course Bernard has been in person the entire year very successfully. And we're working on welcoming back more students from remote learning into in-person learning try three. So that's that's exciting and the the school year has been going very well and will continue to progress with the same plan at Bernard School. As far as school board candidates, we have Mr. Kime running for reelection for the the Southampton seat. And let's see, this piece does not apply. We're looking forward to planning for our next joint board meeting. The joint board meeting will be March 23rd. The the OC meeting will, the operations committee meeting on March 11th will be when we identify agenda items for the for the joint board meeting and and that'll include electing that the new joint board chair from the Winnicott District. We will have a presentation for the community that will focus on equity. We're going to have a second read of the policies that have been through our districts in February. It's there's the interim superintendent goals and the evaluation process. And there's a potential that we'll have to talk about calendar, but I don't think that will impact the Southampton schedule at all. And and then finally, the only other thing I wanted to bring up tonight was that I'm going to be scheduling some superintendent listening sessions for staff and for families over the next couple of weeks. That'll be outlined in the the weekly communication that will go out tomorrow. So that'll be a time when community and employees can come on and talk about how they'd like to be involved in in their school and how we might work together moving forward. And that's my report.
Thank you. I think you also may want to consider doing a student one. And the reason I say that is just based on the feedback. I actually missed the student for the the form for the superintendent search. I missed that one, but the the feedback was really what good about that. And I think the feedback I really heard was that the students appreciated the ability to go on and articulate what they're experiencing. And so it's just something that you may want to consider. I think they actually specifically highlighted they would like that opportunity to do that more often, so.
Thank you. And well, I'm glad you brought that up because I I neglected to mention that I'm meeting with the Winnicott Executive Council of students on March 23rd and from there, I'm going to let them inform me how they'd like me to to move forward with with communicating with them. But I want to make sure I'm hearing and how I, you know, how I can support them as far as end of year activities. So that's that priority. But yes, absolutely. I want to have a listening session with them also.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. David, this good to see assistant superintendent report back on here. Yeah, it's good. Definitely an indication things are going in the right direction.
Good. Yeah, it's it's nice to be able to talk about relatively normal things during these meetings. So I'll give you the overview. Obviously, it's attached in board docs. So some highlights other than the superintendent search obviously are March 9th planning, which is voting day. Next Tuesday, we have a full PD day scheduled for the SAU. And we've got a, we've got a really packed agenda and we've got a lot of excitement. I've got a lot of excitement for it. As you can see, the morning is going to be focused on diversity and equity within our SAU. We're going to have a facilitated discussion with the help of some folks from Keene State College as well as UNH. So our faculty can come together both as an SAU, but also within buildings and talk about some of the barriers to equity that we're seeing and some of the strengths that we have as an SAU. So that's the morning. In the afternoon of the ninth, we are going to be looking at some concrete strategies for social emotional learning in the classroom. We've actually got a guest speaker who should lighten things up and hopefully I think drive home the message of connections and communication with our students. And I think it's timely because this is, you know, obviously, a lot of kids are coming back in person. We want to start focusing on those relationships and building that community again. So so that's the status of the planning. Obviously, I'll send out invitation for the opening address to all joint board members. So you guys can jump on and see what we're up to. A second piece on my report is the trimester three transition. This is pretty quick. It's just an update with when and how kind of the transition into trimester three is taking place. Not so much in Southampton, but other schools were kind of unwinding the RLA. And we therefore we had to get a process together for capturing final grades for making these transfers and making sure everybody was good to go for trimester three. So so that's a schedule for grade capturing and reporting throughout the SAU. That's another ancillary benefit of this whole thing is we are actually able to line up this great capture across all of our sending schools, which we've never done in the past. So that's good news. Certification updates, we certainly we have a hundred and fourteen staff members now that are up for recertification. That's a total of a hundred and seventy two endorsements that our office has to approve. We're well on our way and the deadline is going to be April 15th for those teachers to submit their recertification paperwork. Michelle, to answer your email question earlier, you've got a great PD liaison there at Southampton with Tara. She does a great job. And so all that paperwork will go directly to my office and we can go go ahead and approve that. And I'll plan on just giving regular updates on certification progress for everybody. And then last, this was, you know, got kind of obscured by other pressing issues, but the math program review and the world language program review. I wanted to make sure that those didn't fall off our plate. First, with respect to the math program review, I attached it to the board docs. It was, it was actually a really comprehensive ninety-two page document on where we where we are with respect to a lot of different data points, curriculum trajectory, standardized test scores, credit and all that. Now, some of that's going to get a little muddy now that we're coming back from remote learning across the board. But I think the benefit of having the math program review published and available to you guys is that we've got a template. We've got a, we've got a framework with which we can update as our data comes in and gets a little bit cleaner after, you know, this hiatus of remote learning. So that's where the math program review is. I know it's also just in time for Southampton to start looking at a new math program for next year, but I I hope that this informs that discussion and that approach as well. And lastly, world language program review, what we're planning on doing is starting fresh in the fall to try to get some local assessment data. Obviously, we don't have statewide assessment data with the world language. But we're going to get some local assessment data. We've aligned the curriculum so that we can actually measure acquisition of standards and competencies. And then, of course, we have the placement tests, not it doesn't apply to Southampton, but the placement test for the high school do give us a lot of information about our students. So as that begins to clear data wise, we're going to be able to publish something meaningful for world language as we move forward. I would anticipate that being the fall of 2021. So I'll pause there. If you guys have questions, I'm happy to to answer.
Great. Um, I know regarding the math one, I actually read that a while back. The I thought it was really well done. I'm glad you published it. And obviously, looking forward to the the future ones.
You were the one that read it.
I think it was around August, right? It was a while back. Yeah, it was a good one. Sharon, Becky, do you guys have anything?
No, thank you.
So yeah, and also just want to say really good job. I know RLA is starting to wind down a bit, just really good job putting that together, David. That was a very difficult task and I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. It was due to a lot of a lot of work from a lot of people.
Alright. Michelle, do you want to take us through the principal report?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so as Caroline pointed out, we have students returning to school. We have five students returning. Some are coming from the RLA and some are coming back from homeschooling. So we are really pleased to say that we can accommodate the students without any major changes to the classroom. So we're thrilled to have them back. And as Dave mentioned, our trimester two will end on March twenty, on March 19th. And we'll be having parent teacher conferences on the March 17th and 18th. And parents will be able to view their report cards on Power School on April 1st. And this is going to be the last trimester of grading in middle school with just traditional grades. At the end of the year, we're going to be grading middle school students using both traditional and competency based grading. And our ultimate goal is next year, we're going to transition just to competency based grading only. So we're really looking forward to that transition. As far as professional development, our middle school teachers are continuing to work with John Vander Els. And they're really working hard on their competency based teaching units. They've done a tremendous job. Sarah Cassas is going to come to our next school board meeting to show you some of the work that she's done in ELA that has been fantastic. And all the teachers have been doing a great job with that. The elementary teachers are just starting to pick up where they left off prior to the pandemic and they're looking at their curriculum and instruction practices and seeing how they can move more towards competency based teaching. We're still doing SEL trainings with Mrs. Johnson on co-regulation and regulating, regulating our students and teacher co-regulation to help our students in the classroom. And that's been really well received by the staff. And as Dave mentioned, we have race and equity and SEL coming up through SAU 21. And we're continuing to work on community building in the school as much as we can by keeping our cohort models intact. And we're doing that through book buddies and our mentoring program where the students meet virtually monthly and we have all school meetings monthly. And additionally, we have recently held a virtual cooking club for elementary students. We had pretty good participation and it was very successful. The middle school is going to have a craft club that's going to be next week. They're going to start it a craft club. And we are going to be providing after school sports clubs. This spring, we're in the process of figuring out a schedule for that and how we're going to manage that by keeping it safe and making sure that it's safe so that we meet the needs of all students and all families at their comfort level of how they're dealing with COVID. So more to come on that. We're, we plan, hope to get something out next week. And our math program is we've our committee, we did Dave, look at your, look at the SAU review and that did guide our work. And we have narrowed it down to two programs and we think we will have something maybe by the end of April, a final decision. And last, but definitely not least, I'm pleased to announce that Sarah Cassas was nominated as New Hampshire Teacher of the Year. And she was reluctant to decide whether she wanted to accept the nomination because she's a very humble person. But she has decided and we're thrilled and she's going to go through with that application process. So we're happy about that. And then one last thing that we we did for the community is we made, students made Valentines for every member of the Southampton community, every resident, and we sent them out before Valentine's Day and we've gotten a lot of really good feedback from people. We've been getting cards from random people and I got a ton of emails and we get, we have gotten phone calls and the town clerk has called us to say that she keeps getting phone calls from people that they really appreciated that, especially now during during this isolation, isolated time. So we got really good feedback on that. So that was great. They were really cute. So it was nice to do.
I'm glad you guys did that. Such a good day. Good thing to do for the community, you know.
They were so fun. Some of them were really funny. Any questions?
For me, I have heard a few families are moving into town. I don't know if they'll be. And it's obviously north towards the end of the year. So typically they don't look to move schools, but just to be aware that there are a few that are coming. It's a good thing in in normal times.
It'll be good. We'll make it work.
Yep. And that's all I have. Okay. Sorry, Becky, you guys good? Alright.
Good.
Uh, next is the finance report. Matt, do you want to run us through that?
Yes, thank you. So we have included the fiscal year dates expenditure and revenue report in board docs. There are no significant changes from last month. We we are forecasting for the rest of the year. You know, our anticipated costs and known costs, we're looking at, you know, being over budget or by approximately thirty thousand, a little over thirty thousand dollars. Where this expenditure report indicates that we have an available balance of eight thousand dollars, but after you know, Michelle and Aileen, you know, took a real close look at what what they anticipate. We will have for expenditures for the remainder of the year and we do think we will be in that thirty thousand dollar range. As I've mentioned in previous meetings, that's primarily due to benefits. So we have we have gone over budget primarily in health insurance due to plan changes, plan elections from employees as well as special education, some technology costs and facilities costs primarily related to COVID expenditures. We are, we do have some unanticipated revenue, however, we were not eligible for the majority of the CARES funds as as we've reported in the past. So that's really the the crux of the reason for withdrawing from the computer trust as well as the special education trust is to supplement some of those special education and technology costs that we have that we've incurred. So I'd be happy to answer any any other specific questions in regard to the tie the report.
I was all set. Thank you, Matt. So next is new business and it has to pay years withdrawal from the Special Education Expendable Trust Fund. Does anybody have any questions about it before we? Pretty self-explanatory. Can I get a motion to withdraw twenty five thousand from the Special Education Expendable Trust for unanticipated special education tuition costs?
I make that motion.
Is there a second? Sharon, you're muted. You're muted.
I second, sorry.
Great, thank you.
I was trying to make the motion. Nobody is listening to me.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great, thank you. Next is the computer withdrawal for the from the Computer Capital Reserve Trust Fund. Once again, I think given the the year, it's pretty self-explanatory. So can I get a motion to withdraw four thousand from the Computer Capital Reserve Trust Fund for the purchase of student computers for remote learning?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second. My second.
Great.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Great. So the next is the renominations, but we're going to address that in the non-public. Continuing business next is the superintendent search update. Dave, you want to run through it? Want me to? I'm happy to.
Yeah, sure. I'm happy to talk through it. Obviously, four of the people in this meeting are on the committee. But we are, the process is moving forward. We've got our community staff and student forums all took place this week, actually. Tuesday, Wednesday, and actually today, earlier today was the staff forum. I think we we got some good information, especially from, as you said, the students, and I think today's faculty forum went pretty well. So in addition to the forums, they do have the digital survey that's closing at the end of the week. There was a stipulation that particularly went out to members of the joint board and I believe that's already out to you guys. So make sure you get your voices heard via that survey. And again, that's going to close Friday. Positions posted. We are determining the the characteristics or the rubric, if you will, by which we're going to assess the candidates as they come in. And the Brian Group, the consultants are offering up some interview training early next week, Monday next week. They're going to bring the committee through some interview techniques, address biases, etc. So that's that's it in a nutshell unless the other members have anything to add.
Yeah, just on that timing, I think the the applications need to be in by I guess, March 14th or maybe 15th, right around there. And then I would expect at a call with the consultants yesterday, we expect to start screening the applicants on the meeting on March 15th. So and then the interviews will kick off after that point, so. Anybody have any, Becky, Sharon, any questions?
Nope. Nope.
Probably I'll just run through next meeting dates before you go in on public. Voting day is the ninth, just so everybody knows, I did with help from the school, they helped me out with printing and stapling, but we sent out the mailer to the town. Went into the post office today, so probably should hit mailboxes tomorrow or Saturday just to talk through the two warrant articles or articles that'll be voted on. And so that's going to be on the ninth. The operations committed meetings, March 11th. The joint next joint board is March 22nd and then our next school board meeting will be Thursday, April 1st. There was a question if we want to do that in person or virtually. So I think we'll probably spend the next sometime in the next week or so, I'll probably just send an email, email out to everybody and we can kind of debate if we want to do it virtually or in person. I know some other schools are probably going back to in person, so it's just something we need to kind of talk through. We obviously typically don't get a lot of attendees, so maybe even a better platform, but we'll we'll kind of debate that for for our specific use.
Would it be at, would it be at the Barnard School?
That'd be a debate. Yeah, I would think we got to just kind of think through it. I wouldn't, I thought the the meeting we had at Barnard went well. I was pretty comfortable, but it's, I think it's just a question of how much extra work that creates versus this. So we'll kind of, I think we can debate that offline and kind of figure it out over the next week or so. I think it's a bigger issue for some other schools, you know, that are returning to in person where we've been in person the whole year, so. Alright, so can, next on the agenda would be to go into non-public. We do have All right. So can, next on the agenda would be to go into non-public. We do have two attendees now. So how we want, yeah.
Yeah. What I would recommend Deb is we would bring them in as actual panelists. And then there's a thing called putting, putting them on hold. That way they can't see or hear anything and we can just take them off hold when we're done with non-public. I can help with that if you'd like, but we would need the motion first and all that.
Okay, that's, I want to now do the motion first.
Yes, do the motion first. Can I get a motion to go in and on public?
I'll make that motion.
I think it's under.
91A13.
A, yeah.
RSA 91 dash A3.
Second.
Great.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken. Okay, so Dave.
I'll just bring the attendee in and then we put her on hold. Okay.
Awesome.
And let me lock the meeting just so nobody else jumps in.
As the recording.
As the recording, please.
Yes. Give me one second.
So Deb, you're on mute.
Do you guys, so do we want to reconfirm that Sharon, you're doing the motion and Rebecca, you're doing the second?
Sure.
Okay, so Jim.
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Okay, motion taken.
Vote taken. Great. Can I get a motion to accept the retirement of Lynn Meehan effective June 9th, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
So is that Sharon and then Becky?
Yes.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Regretfully, regretfully.
Yes, yes. Thank you for putting, yeah, can you put regretfully in for, for mine as well? She's.
Yes, wow. That's a long time.
Yep. Next, can we get a?
Can you hold on one second? For some reason, my thing's not holding the vote. So it was Sharon and then Rebecca. Mark unanimous, save. Give me one second. Just want to finish that. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. Next is, can I get a motion to accept the interim superintendent's recommend, recommendation of renominations for Barnard School certified staff, teachers and administrators for the 2021, 22 school year?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Congratulations, Michelle.
Uh, next, can I get a motion to accept the interim superintendent's recommendation of a two-year contract for Michelle Witt as principal of Barnard School effective on July 1st, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
That was all rolled into there, sorry.
I did too, yeah.
Sorry.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you. Now congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
Michelle, we, you've done a great job for us and we're thrilled to have you moving forward.
Thank you. Well, happy to be here. Thanks.
Good.
And the last one here is, can I get a motion to accept the interim superintendent's recommendation of a two-year contract for Eileen Donabedian as Director of Special Services of Barnard School effective July 1st, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken. Congratulations, Eileen. I know you're right here.
We're equally excited to have her for another two years. And is there anything else anybody has before we adjourn the meeting? All right. It would beat my heart stop. That's even better. All right. Thank you, everybody. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 5:14?
Motion to adjourn? At 5:14.
Second.
Jim Kime?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yes.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Vote taken.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.